This is taking the remainder of the $300,000.
Okay, Rob, go ahead.
Recording in progress.
Okay, first item, if you would pull your microphones up and use them because otherwise the Zoom audience can't hear. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to all who are here present and to those in our Zoom audience as well. We have, do we have, we have a quorum for sure.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Do we have enough for the vote, for the bylaws? All right.
And Mark just showed up, too.
Yeah. There's a request for a public comment by Zach Nguyen. Is Zach here?
I have him on virtual. He'll be on in just a moment.
While we're waiting, why don't we review the minutes? They have been, any corrections or deletions?
Yes, I had one. It relates to the comments on page three concerning Mr. Lynch's comments concerning, in several cases, it is talked about zoning and it actually should be code enforcement in those cases because I'm sure I did not bring up zoning in that discussion.
Is that last paragraph, is it?
Last paragraph on page three. And then it, it over to the first paragraph of page four splits the paragraph. It's the same paragraph.
Oh, I see zoning, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, what are we changing it to? Code enforcement?
Code enforcement.
It should be code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Any other?
I'd like to correct the spelling of Ms. Olson's last name. It's S-O-N, not E-N. Just a small change there on page five.
Page five. Was it S-O-N?
O-N, yep, correct.
Then I tell you once I've been getting it wrong. Any others?
Joe, with those, I'll move the minutes.
I was going to ask for my next request, yes. Is there a second? Joe. All those in favor, please say aye or?
Aye.
Me, too. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, minutes? Is Zach with us yet? Person or remotely?
Joe, he's, Joe, he's on there.
Zach, you're muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's Zach. The Common Council is an unserious body focused on causes and pet issues while the community decay. Other municipalities cannot rely on City Hall or the Common Council to effectively manage the affairs of the community, which is the beating heart of the county. Ithaca is essentially a one-party system that lends itself to corruption and abuse. This tiny minority of people holds the fate of the county in their hands, and this problem will only become worse next year if the Common Council does not be swept by a supermajority of the out hearts that intent on enacting socialist politics. I am curious if the council is aware of this issue and what can be done to deter the fundamental, undecreced Democrats' moral compass. I would like to understand the process of the combination of the city and town of if it gets into one municipality or if it would be possible for individual municipalities within the county to break off from Tompkins and join another county with it.
Okay, interesting agenda.
I'm not sure if Zach was done or whether he got cut off by communication somehow.
Is that it from Zach? Well, he may have gotten cut off since he now disappeared. Oh, wow. He's back again. He's back? Are you there, Zach? He's muted.
I am on a, would it be possible for me to come to make change if I'm at the bottom?
Zach, it's very hard to hear you. You're breaking up.
I think he asked to come another time in person, but I'm not clear that that was what he said. And if that's what you said, Zach, yes, you can attend in person at our next meeting.
Although many of us might, might be participating by Zoom, but.
Yes. However, the broadband connections act to be better here than wherever Zach is.
Hello, can you hear?
Yeah.
You can, okay. Can I try that again? Did you hear me at all before? Hello?
Oh, you're still, you're still cutting in and out.
I'll just email it, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Report from County Administration, Lisa.
Thank you, Joel. I do have a few updates. I'll just run through them briefly. So Tompkins County Administration continues to take part in briefings with the State Association of Counties and the Governor's Office on the potential transportation and relocation of asylum seekers to upstate counties. The county has not declared a state of emergency to block asylum seekers from local hotels, and we don't intend to do so. We still have not received a notification from the Governor's Office nor from New York City that there are any imminent plans for the relocation of asylum seekers to Tompkins County. Yesterday, County Administration hosted a briefing for community service organizations, higher ed partners, and local municipal elected officials on the issue of asylum seekers being relocated from New York City, just to provide the updates as, as we've been receiving them. Several organizations have stated their willingness to assist in the event that we do receive folks here, and we plan to continue regular briefings with this group to stay updated and, and informed and prepared. In other matters, the county continues to work on getting targeted information out to community members regarding flood insurance, rate map, map updates. Resources have been shared with municipalities to help provide information to their affected constituents. Each household in the affected areas of the city and other municipalities have received informational flyers in the mail. There is a, a link on the county's webpage having to do with the updated flood insurance rate map information. And 2-1-1 will also be a local resource to constituents on this issue. In other matters, we continue to encourage survey responses to the opioid settlement survey to help advise the county on how to prioritize the spending of over $700,000 of opioid settlement funds. The survey is available on the county's website, and it will be open through May 29th. And then finally, the shared services panel, which many of you participate on, convened for the first meeting on April 26th, and the next virtual meeting is scheduled for this coming Tuesday, May 30th at 6:00 PM. I think those are all the updates I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions on, on any, anything I covered.
I don't have anything, but will you be available later when we get into some of the other stuff?
I will be here. I have a four o'clock meeting, so I'll stay as long as I can.
Robert has a question.
One question I had for you Administrator Holmes, we in Enfield are sort of in a mini panic because we have learned that the federal debt ceiling talks might endanger our unspent American Rescue Plan funds. We're having a special town board meeting tonight where we'll probably parcel out most of those monies in very short fashion. I was curious to know at the county level, is this a problem with either the money that's been set aside for the Community Recovery Fund or, secondly, the money that was set aside by the county for cash for capital?
That's a great question. We, as I've understood it, the, the threat to those funds are for any that are unobligated, and at this point, the vast majority of the county's funds are obligated, even though they haven't been necessarily all spent. They are obligated and designated for a variety of projects, and contracts are written and, and plans are underway for those funds. So we, at this point, from what we understand, are not, not feeling an immediate threat to those funds.
Thank you.
Don't want to panic through the rest of the crowd, though. Reports, yes. There's another question?
I, I would like Robert to expand on what he was describing because I have not heard that those funds are specifically targeted. So if, if you could expand on where you heard and what you heard?
We heard from our auditor earlier this month, from Insiro, local firm, and I specifically asked that auditor whether the uncommitted COVID relief funds that have been talked about, I guess by both the President and the Majority Leader of the House, is being subject to reduction because in, during the, during the debt ceiling talks, whether this included the American Rescue Plan money. And this auditor said point blank, yes, it does. And it kind of shocked me. It shocked other members of our town board. And so we said to ourselves, the more we can commit, the better. Now, the auditor did qualify that, he said, I cross my fingers, and that we hope that nothing will be clawed back from ARPA until after the end of this year. Because as you may know, at the town level, you do a once-a-year accounting of the money that's spent. The report is usually done in April, and I guess it considers the money that was spent during a previous calendar year. So we were hoping that the money would be spent, that anything we committed before December 31st would be safe, harmless. I guess that we're being very cautious in Enfield, and our supervisor says, better commit it sooner rather than later, because we really don't know what's going to be happening. And that's about all I can say right now. We'll learn more at our town board meeting tonight.
And again, we're going to see this again when the budget goes through, so that's another point in which we could do this all over again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, for what it's worth, I'm, I'm still not certain whether, I know that that was a proposal early on by House Speaker McCarthy, the, the potential clawback of ARPA funds, and I have not heard or it's not been verified whether that has any legs to it or, or not. So I think more, more to be revealed there, but it's something that I'm certainly wanting to keep my eye on as well.
Thank you. All I know is that what I hear in the mainstream media is that both the President and the House Speaker have indicated this should probably be the first place they'd compromise. So I don't know where it's going to go from here.
Stay tuned. Is Harris Weiss here?
Yes, yes.
It's hard to introduce someone you haven't met yet. Would you, would you care to introduce yourself?
My name is Harris Weiss.
Speaking to one of the mics.
You'll have to use one, one of the mics or they won't hear you.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So my name is Harris Weiss. I am the Southern Tier Regional Rep, representative for Governor Kathy Hochul. Started this job in December, and I'm glad to be with you all today. I'm glad to be here at the first one that's back somewhat in person. So my job is to kind of be here in the region, the eyes and ears of the Governor's Office, and to also help all of you should you have a question or a concern with New York State. I have been emailing most supervisors, mayors, with some information. If you are in that group and you have not received emails from me, please let me know. I will also make sure all of you have my contact information, so if you ever have any questions or concerns or just see something at the state level that you want to learn more about, I can help answer those questions. I appreciate being here with you all, and please don't ever hesitate to reach out.
We have gotten those emails, and it's nice to see you in person.
Perfect. Working.
On to the broadband update.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes. Hi, Nick.
Hi, Joel. Good afternoon, yeah. We've got some other folks that are going to be joining here. I'll give a little introduction and then let them take it away. So, yeah, so I'm here today to update everybody on the county's efforts to expand broadband access. The Department of Planning and Sustainability has been working for just about a year with ECC Technologies. They were one of three firms that responded to a request for proposals that we put out last spring and were the successful finalist in that selection process. They've been demonstrating their ability to help us and other counties throughout the region over the past several months in helping our staff understand this topic area better and provide some expert guidance. So over the course of the year, we, we've been having biweekly meetings with this consulting firm among staff and of the county and with Ithaca Area Economic Development. They're going to talk about, bit more about some of the process and how they got to their recommendations, but they've also been, in addition to that, they've also been helping us with understanding the data that FCC is sharing and how we went about our challenge to the data that was presented there and helping to us understand the priorities and needs of the community through the broadband adoption and access tool. So, yeah, so we have been in close touch with ECC since March, which, which is when we started to really narrow in on where the recommendations they were proposing were pointing to, and have been working with our county legislature and staff at advancing those recommendations. So with that, I'm going to let our team here with ECC take it away. Joe, Andy, Cameron, and Mark, I'll leave it in your capable hands.
Great. Thank you, everybody. My name is Joe Starks. I'm president of ECC Technologies. Grew up on Susquehanna Street in Binghamton, so I'm a pretty tough kid, if you know what that means. Anyway, Andy, could you go to the next slide? And, and I am, actually, I'm looking forward to getting back to pers, in personal meetings. Technology challenges, some of you will find out, that's why Andy's running this presentation. But we've been working in the Tompkins County Southern Tier New York, United States area for almost 26 years now. We've been involved in broadband for nearly 25 of those years, and we've developed about $3 billion in broadband programs around North America, Central America, et cetera. Locally, you might be aware of the Southern Tier Network. We were the foundation consulting team for the Southern Tier Network, as well as the Yates County Project, the Central New York Project, the ErieNet Project, the Dank Project. Basically, where I'm going with this is we've been doing this for a long time, and we're very excited to be working with Tompkins County on this. So we are entrepreneurial in spirit, and by that I mean we take a good, strong, hard look at the business models behind what makes these broadband networks work, and, and we put our time and effort into them, and everyone that we've ever been involved in and started is successfully operating today. So having said that, Andy, we'll move on to the next slide, please. Here's, essentially, here's what we've covered for Tompkins County so far. The mapping and analysis side that you may or may not be aware that ECC performed the broadband inventory study and analysis for the State of New York Broadband Project. We worked with the state to create these maps, interactive address-level maps. We also worked with the state to take a look at the FCC fabric maps and compare those, identify where issues and problems may lie. We've completed analysis of the broadband infrastructure within the county of Tompkins County to the extent possible, and what that means is, is basically, we have put people in vehicles who have driven every road in the county, and they've identified physically where broadband infrastructure is and where it is not. Having said that, in some cases, some, some streets may be fed from the back lot, some streets may be fed through woods that we couldn't get access to, but I think you're going to find that we're, we're very, very accurate with our maps and our, and our addresses. We've defined the providers that are providing services within the county, the types of services. We've created a new detailed broadband map of the county and the infrastructure available in it. We've identified served, underserved, et cetera, et cetera, including roads that are not served. And here's why that's important, because at some point, someone's going to want to build a house or build a business on a road that currently is not, you may not have any addresses on it. So it wouldn't be a big deal to not have infrastructure there today, but it will be in the future, so that's something that needs to be considered. We've verified this by address and, as I mentioned, by physical survey. And we've taken a look at where the existing providers are today as compared to where there is no infrastructure today, and then what would it take to expand that infrastructure and cover 100% of the addresses within the county? We, we've performed significant community engagement, and we've talked to local service providers, we've engaged the stakeholders, and we've evaluated and provided a summary of our BAT program, and BAT stands for Broadband Availability and Adoption Tool, and this information has come from the state and the county. And what's important to understand about the Broadband Availability and Adoption Tool, and you'll get a little view of some statistics in a moment, but that is the personal side of broadband. As many people now understand, having access to broadband is one thing, but having the ability to use it, the desire to use it, can afford to use it, those are considered adoption issues, and how those are dealt with are entirely different than those that don't have it because of infrastructure. So we've developed some options for expanding broadband services, and there's some general funding options and funding sources out there as well. Next slide. Essentially, what you're looking at here, the green dots are unserved addresses within the county. The red lines are what would be required to build infrastructure from the green lots to the green dots, which are unserved, to the nearest infrastructure that's capable of serving them. Keep in mind, we're talking about high-speed broadband. We're not talking about DSL, so we're looking at two forms of, of infrastructure. One is fiber optics, and the second is coax. Both are capable of providing 100 megabit services. DSL, although they claim it is unless you live at the central office, generally not, not, not provided. There's a total of 1,216 addresses that we identified as unserved. We, we compiled that to show that there's 116 miles approximately of additional infrastructure that would be required to connect those 1, 1,216 addresses to existing infrastructure to provide service. The estimated cost at this point is about $7 million to do that. It's important to understand why that number is there, because that gives you your starting point when you're looking at what is it going to take to solve this problem. A moment ago, you heard me talk about the Broadband Availability and Adoption Tool Set and what you're looking at on the, on the map right now. The red dots represent persons who have responded to the online or written survey that, that provided information on broadband to the county. We received over 1,000 responses from across the county, and looking at that map, I, I think the spread is actually pretty good. There's some areas that we could have done better in, but I think you've got a fairly good representation. What did we find? Well, we found that 17% of the respondents did not have access to broadband. That turned out to be higher than the New York State average, which is a concern, because that means that you are definitely on the, on the unserved side of the state in terms of who has it and who doesn't. 29, 28% roughly believe they couldn't purchase the speed they wanted, and then 13% indicated that they weren't sure they could. So you're looking at roughly 40%, a little more than 40% that are either uncertain about their broadband or already know that it's an issue or a problem. 69%, 67% of the respondents, maybe I should clean my glasses, right, indicated that they use broadband internet for healthcare and working from home, and that's a big deal. That's a very large number, and that's indicative of where we're seeing the rest of the country go in terms of the uses of broadband, and that's important to keep in mind, because if 67% show that number, then you've got a lot of folks in the county that are using broadband for things other than gaming, internet surfing, and email, so that's an important number. And 96% said that it's an essential service. So we're getting up there in very high numbers right now, and I think the folks within the county, they understand the value of broadband, they need the broadband, they want the broadband, and that's a good thing, because I think five or six years ago, we had these conversations, and the numbers were much different. So I think the communities are waking up, and the people are waking up to the use of broadband and the value that it provides. 85% that it's important to have a choice in broadband services as well, and we all want competition. We'd like to have competition, if we can, everywhere. It's not possible, but that's something to strive for longer term. So what you'll find is that the information that gathered out of the BAT, and there's more details that'll come through on the survey with this, this is just a high-level summary, but this information also fed into the infrastructure information that we found to create what we consider to be the optimal solutions for the county to take a look at. Andy, next slide, please. So let's talk for a moment about evaluating the options and what are the considerations. Well, first of all, there's the keep-it-simple-stupid principle kiss. I'm sure we've all heard that growing up. It's easy if you can define a single process countywide that all the communities can work from, but that may not be possible. We understand that, so, so for the most part, the simplification of the processes is very important so the county can actually manage it. You've got nine towns. If nine towns all decide to do something different, the county's got to manage that. That's going to be quite an undertaking on the part of the county, to be honest with you. Financial support for the build-out of infrastructure is absolutely going to be needed, we know that. Ownership of investments can be explored, you know, what does that mean? Well, that means that the county can, for putting money into these projects, the county can look at taking some ownership of the infrastructure out of it. And how does that work? Well, it can work towards connecting public safety towers, it can work towards connecting county, village, city, office facilities, high schools, middle schools, grade schools, and libraries. So ownership of investment is something that some communities want, because they want to get something for the dollars that they put into this, but it's also a double-edged sword, because then it requires the county to maintain and operate that infrastructure, which is a whole different level and requires a lot of operational components by the county, not to mention potentially additional funding. And at some point, you're always going to need established and well-run internet service providers as partners. This is not something the county can take on, on its own, and if you could, then that would be a different story, but given that you've already got two communities looking at this, you're going to need internet service partners. at this, you're going to need internet service partners. There are several funds out there that can be looked at. We've talked, I heard conversations about the ARPA earlier, the NTIA, New York State funds available, public safety grants are available to build infrastructure, connect, connect PSAPs and self, and public safety towers. The Department of Agriculture's got money available, and others are available as well, including private funding. You know, one of the major funding sources for broadband today with communities is private investment. So let's talk for a moment about the possible solutions. We defined four options right now for you to take a look at, but what I'd like you to keep in mind is, we're going to recommend these, we're going to recommend a couple of these options, but if one option doesn't work, then you still have the flexibility and the time to explore other options. So keeping that in mind, the first option, if the, if the county has a, a purchasing policy of bidding, everything must be bid out, then we would recommend, which is very common across New York State right now, that the county would release an RFP. So that's a solution, and then you would solicit from providers, cost and partnerships to build infrastructure to all of these homes that are unserved. If you're not required to have a bid, then you can enter into negotiations with the providers themselves. Both of these will get you 100% coverage. Both of these have the potential of getting you what you desire, which is getting, which is getting service to all of the addresses in the county. The third option, which is the creation of public-private partnerships, and essentially what that is, is that is the county builds infrastructure out, and the county then owns that infrastructure, and then you bring in a partner, a broadband provider, or more than one, to provide those services across the network to the residents and addresses that currently have none. There's some advantages and disadvantages to that. First of all, the disadvantage, main disadvantage, is the cost, very expensive, but that includes also part of option four, which is an open-access middle-mile network. And when you think about a middle-mile network, I want you to think about the Southern Tier, and Southern Tier does in fact run, parts of it do run through Tompkins County. And basically, that is the county building infrastructure out for your own needs, which could include public safety, schools, libraries, government office buildings, et cetera, which would be justified based on cost avoidance, because those numbers, the costs that you pay for that today would essentially be rolled into the infrastructure and used to pay for that infrastructure. The advantage of number four also, you own it, but it's also a shared operational cost model. And then broadband providers would be required to build off this open-access model into the homes that are currently unserved. And where the access model helps is that it gets these broadband providers a little closer to the homes. That's probably a longer shot, to be honest with you, for the county to do that, because none of the homes that are unserved today have significant amounts of build to them. There's infrastructure that's relatively close by most of them, so, you know, option four is, is probably not the option that you'd want to lead with, but let's jump to the next one, Andy. So the initial two solutions that we'd like the county to think about, and as I said when I started this, there's four options out there. You know, the county could choose a fifth option, which is to build broadband infrastructure at every home in the county. Probably not likely, but it's still an option out there. But we're seeing that, first of all, option one is to divide the county into zones, and then initiate an RFP. We say two to three zones, but it could be as many as nine, right? We'd have to work that out with the county, because you do have two towns that are considering broadband today, and you'd want to give them the flexibility to at least be able to see what some of the responses would be relative to their counties, and then make a decision on how they, how the county would go forward based on that. But essentially, the RFP would solicit providers to provide a funding request for fiber infrastructure built out to the needed areas within the county, whereby serving 100% of the homes. You'd give the providers the ability to bid on one, two, three, or all nine of the zones, however that got divvied up. We estimate the construction cost, as, as we said, would be $7 million, and 116 miles of infrastructure would be required, and that would be the number that, if you did that yourself and built infrastructure of those homes. So you certainly would not expect a provider to come back and say, "We want $20 million to do this," because you already know what the cost is to do it yourself in terms of infrastructure. So it gives you more of a negotiating position. And you can negotiate each one of these, from towns, county, grants, ISP, private investment, and as I said, the county should not pay 100% of that. Today, a couple of examples where this is going on in New York State is Onadaga County. Onadaga County did put out a bid, and Verizon won the bid, so Verizon is moving forward building fiber infrastructure. And I do want to, I do want to clarify that we're only talking about fiber infrastructure being built at this time. So the county, Onadaga County's building with Verizon, fiber infrastructure to all of the homes over 1,200, I believe, within the county that currently do not have access to it. Wayne County, which is another model, they've chose to partner with Charter Spectrum to do the same thing, and for that, they will each get 100% coverage of all the addresses within their territory. So option one, again, if you broke it down into three zones, and this is just an example, each of the zones is, is a different color, and that's how it might look. If you go to the next slide, Andy, we can see the town boundaries, and you can see within each town approximately how many, how many locations there would be and what it might look like. So I think it probably would make sense for the county to really consider the nine zones, so that you'd get a chance for Dryden and Caroline to see what, what the responses would come back in, and then they could make their own decision based on those. Next slide, please. The other option that you have would be direct negotiations with the broadband providers. And again, this map shows you, the, the light colors are Verizon, but it shows you the breakdown of the broadband providers that you have within the county, and they're all relatively close to where you'd want them to be to solve these issues and problems. The county would provide some level of support, which would be negotiated between the county and the provider. And again, you would find that within each of these service territories, you would be negotiating with the individual provider that's already there today. It doesn't do a lot for competition, but it simplifies what the county would want to try to do. The estimated cost, again, is $7 million, so you would not expect to see Verizon or any of them come back and say, "We want $10 million to do this." The amount of financial support at that point would be negotiated, and Green County has implemented this model, and it's working fairly well for them. You're still going to cover 100% of your addresses. The ownership of the infrastructure is going to be owned by the providers, but you have the option at this point of negotiating what we call an indefeasable right of use. And an indefeasable right of use essentially is a negotiation between yourself and the provider to provide the county with, with fiber optic infrastructure for its own internal needs. Again, public safety towers, towns, villages, school districts, libraries, things of those natures. You're going to contribute taxpayer dollars, you're not going to recover any of that money, those are downsides. And the awardee may be a dominant provider, and in which case, you're not going to do much for competition either. And you're, you're also not going to have any control over the, the quality of service that would be delivered by that provider. So if, so if the provider in that area is not a good provider, they may not be a good provider upon completion of this either. However, they will serve 100% of the addresses. Andy, next slide, please. Some of the funding options that we discussed, there's the local share, the ARPA, Community Recovery Awards. There's $42 billion coming out in federal BEAT funding via the NTIA. There's $1 billion in public-private investment for New York State ConnectAll. There's private investors who are looking for these opportunities. I probably get a half dozen emails a day from investors looking for opportunities to invest in broadband. And the other part of this, too, is the providers themselves, they have access to funds. You know, 10 years ago, when we were having these conversations about broadband, there wasn't a significant amount of private investment going into broadband markets. Most of it was going into, to enterprise broadband, which would be, you know, the larger customers like hospitals, and school districts, and colleges. Today, there's a significant amount of money going into residential fiber-to-the-home broadband investments, and I would dare say that there are no, there are no broadband providers that I know of today that do not have access to private investment groups who are interested in working with them. Andy, next slide, please. So we've discussed this with many, but here are the providers that are operating within the county, who most likely would wish to take advantage or take part in this if the, if the county were to bid something out or negotiate something out. You can see, there's quite a list there, so. Next slide, Andy. And that's questions.
I have a question. So I'm Jason Leifer from Supervisor Town of Dryden. So I don't know that if we heard from you when you were doing this study, but we've already built backbone fiber along our entire rail trail. So that's allowing us to, I mean, we're already, and we're already serving customers, but there are two counties you left out of where you're, both Madison County and Yates County are building, are working on systems that are probably more open-access-ish. I know Madison's working with Empire Access to service customers. So is there, did you talk to either of those counties, and if you did, you know, what do you think, and if you didn't, why not?
We actually did. Andy, can you take the presentation down so we can expand the screen? Yeah, we actually, we're, we're doing the Madison County project. I was in interest of keeping it short. We are, and Andy's actually managing that project. We also work with Yates County to get all their data and their information together, and then they work with Hunt to actually do the application for the grant, but we've been engaged with both of those counties for, well, well over 10 years, and with Yates in particular, starting back with this startup of Southern Tier Network. But yeah, they are, they're both doing projects, absolutely, and they own the infrastructure. And I believe Empire's, Empire's working with both of them, correct?
Yeah, they're doing the customer servicing.
Yeah, they're in Livingston as well, Empire's in Livingston. Empire also responded to Onadaga County. The downside for them was that they had to just build so much infrastructure to get there when Spectrum and Verizon had so much already in place, so it just became a tough road for them to, to try to overcome. But that doesn't mean that these communities couldn't also respond to this RFP as well to do, to build out their own towns. You know, I would just caution you that, yes, I think it's great that you're doing some stuff internally, but, you know, for, for this to be a countywide internal network, the risk would be generally pretty high from what we've seen across the industry. Usually, you see a minimum of five to seven years' experience, broadband experience to the home to be considered for such a program.
And if I could add, in the case of Madison County, Madison County, they actually were awarded a Reconnect Grant that we helped them put together and apply for, and it's about a $16.5 million project. And what Madison County is doing is, the way they're set up, is that Madison County is going to own all of the fiber optic infrastructure and all of the electronics. And they have worked a deal with Empire Access for Empire to partner with them, and Empire's actually going to operate the network, and Empire's going to provide all the customer service and provide the services to each customer, be it residential or business. So, so it's a, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good story on how they're doing it, and like Joe said, you know, they have the combination of, the county's going to own the infrastructure, which means that should things, should things require a change, at least the county constituents have ownership of the infrastructure. But at the same time, you've got a very experienced and competent ISP that's actually operating and delivering the services.
So, so the, I had a couple of questions. One, the, the, the RFP process, it seems unlikely that someone who is not adjacent to an unserved area would, would, would actually propose to extend their service into it. I mean, you would not have any competition, would you, for any particular area?
What we found is, you know, we believe that, too, to be honest with you, but what we found is that incumbent providers are taking a different look at this. For example, in Onadaga County, Verizon is actually building fiber infrastructure outside of their service territory to pick up locations that were identified by the county as unserved and, and not having access to infrastructure. So Verizon is building that infrastructure outside of their service territory to cover those. And we're finding that elsewhere, you know, they're, they're finally beginning to wake up, and perhaps it's because there's not so much risk on their part, because the communities are contributing dollars. So I think they're, you're finding them to be a little bit more agreeable and easier to work with than they have been in the past.
Fundamentally, though, when, when it's built out, it becomes, well, it goes to some provider, right? Essentially, the public is subsidizing the extension of the lines, but then doesn't own the end product. Or is there a way for that to be done so that the public retains some ownership stake in it?
There's, there's a couple of ways you can do that. As we mentioned, the Madison County project, which was a Reconnect Grant, requires the county to own that infrastructure, so they will own it. That can be negotiated in with the providers, although I would tell you, Spectrums of the world, most of the providers today, with the exception of some of the ones like Empire, Point Broadband, for example, they don't want you to own the infrastructure. They want to be responsible for it, because at that point, you have very little experience in managing and operating a fiber network, and therefore, they're on the hook to provide services over something that, that they may not have 100% confidence in initially, that you can provide. And Verizon and Spectrum, generally speaking, they will not use others' infrastructure. They want to be responsible for it. Some of the smaller broadband providers, they get it. They will use your infrastructure, and a good case in point is the Southern Tier Network. When we started working with Empire, and we started working, well, when we developed the Southern Tier Network, one of the key components of that was to build fiber-to-the-home across many communities in the Southern Tier. And doing that, we looked for partners that would, would take that on and help, and Empire was one of those partners, and they've done very well. I think the last count was 13 or 15 communities across the Southern Tier that, that used the STN fiber to build fiber-to-the-home with. That's a long way of answering your question, I think, but...
Okay. The, the other interesting, or perhaps relevant question is that, once the, it doesn't do anything to address the, what was identified in the survey by a lot of people as, as an issue, which is cost and, and lack of competition. It does, it is a sort of path of least resistance to get service to those who do not currently have it, but it doesn't do anything in the, in the big picture to address those other questions. Is there...
No, you're absolutely right. It, it may not. I won't say that it won't do that, because if you find that a provider... if you find that a provider comes in and they're going to provide service to all, let's say, all nine zones, and one provider's going to do it, if it's a zone that they currently don't provide services in, but someone else does, then you have competition. You generally have competition between Spectrum and Verizon in a lot of areas. However, Verizon's lacking because they don't offer fiber-to-the-home in as much of a widespread, widespread region as Spectrum offers coax, which is very capable of carrying the 100-megabit speeds. So it doesn't necessarily address the competition issue very well. But then, we have to decide as a community, what are we trying to address? Are we trying to address competition? Or are we trying to get 100% coverage for all in the county? And if you were, if you wanted to address competition, then you could take on an 80-plus-million-dollar project and build fiber-to-the-home across the county. And that would solve that issue.
What you're saying certainly points to the, the answer you get depends on the question you ask. And it looks like the county has essentially chosen to ask the, what's the most expeditious way to extend service to those who do not currently have it. But the bigger question of what's the best way to provide service to the county residents is not really addressed by the options that are highlighted as being the most likely easiest to pursue.
That could be true, yes. But then you have to, I think you need to take a look at the county as a whole and identify where, what is it we're trying to accomplish? You know, are we trying to accomplish getting broadband for all? And keeping in mind that the county's going to pay money out of this. You're going to pay, depending on your answer to this, you could be spending upwards of $80 million or more on that. Or is the county's obligation here to bring broadband infrastructure to every address in the county? And, you know, that's a tough question. That's something that we can't answer for you. We can give you the solutions around either one of those answers, but that's something that we can't answer for the county. That's something, and we're based on, how do we get our charter for this particular project is how do we get coverage for all of the residents and addresses in the county?
Yeah. If I could just chime in for just a second. I'd just kind of reiterate what Joe just said there is that, you know, effectively, the charge that was given to ECC was to figure out how to expand to the unserved locations within the county. And we learned through the survey about, you know, the serious and longstanding concerns about price and competition and got a lot more detail on that. I think, from my perspective, that potentially gives us a direction for future actions and investments in this area. But, you know, the top priority right now at the county level is expanding to those locations where there's no service, that's no high-speed broadband service currently, so.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways to solve the issue of whether the residents and the users are happy with the broadband. One is that you can require Spectrum and Verizon and others to step up their game. You can do that. You know, we know that the broadband definition, if they're going to get federal money, they're going to have to meet the 100-megabit service. And if they don't meet the 100-megabit service, then they're not going to get the money. That's the, that's the long and short of it. So for them to do that, they're going to have to do some infrastructure upgrades for existing components across the county anyway. And in doing that, theoretically, they should also increase the stability and the reliability of the services they get. In terms of the cost, that's a difficult one, because you can take a look at, you know, some folks will say, well, we can build a municipal model and we can give it to you for $39 a month. But if you take a look at a lot of those models that are going across the country, yeah, you're selling it for $39 a month, but the county is paying on top of that whatever the difference was for operations of that network. So are you really getting it for $39 a month? Well, not really, because it might be costing 79 or 99 a month, but someone else is making up the difference through a different, through a different funding source. Now, one thing that I would say is that there are federal grants out there, federal programs in place today. And I think, you know, we've had discussions with Nick and Katie on this. You know, it would be great to push these across the county so that folks know that if they're, if they can't afford the broadband, let's get some federal dollars. There's money out there today to solve that problem. Let's get our residents onto those programs and start getting some of those subsidies to help them get the speeds they want at a cost they can afford.
But they have their providers that are willing to participate, which is an issue, I gather, for some, but the...
They are required to participate because they're being paid by the feds. So we're, we're not aware of any widespread issues relative to participation. And I'm not, and I can, I can take a look at that. We have a whole team of folks that do that research. But we're not aware today of any of those issues. We're keenly aware that the major problem stems from, one is education, folks not knowing that those programs are out there, that they can take advantage of them. And they're extremely complicated, you know, for folks to connect to those and to give them the information. And, you know, we've consistently pushed to try to simplify that process as much as possible. But that seems right now to be the two reasons why they don't take advantage of them. They're complicated to apply for, and a lot of folks don't know they're there.
Can I just add, Joel, that we actually did a big outreach on this topic and trying to get the word out on this. We, Nick worked tirelessly with all the school districts to get mailers in the packets going home with children and information out. So we have done a big push around trying to get people participating in these programs.
Yeah. And if I could just add one more bit onto that, we got some information back from Curtis Hansen with the Appalachian Regional Commission comparing us to some of the peers in the, in the area. And we're actually seeing some uptick in people taking advantage of this program. It is called the Affordable Connectivity Program, if you have not yet heard of it. And if there was a chat box, I'd put the link in there, but it's gitinternet.gov is the link to check for that.
Yeah, that's an excellent program. And most of that money's unused. You know, we're having the same conversations with the state of New Jersey right now. And we've seen similar results on their studies that folks, they're not aware of that money being out there, and they're not using broadband because they can't afford it.
Yeah, I've had at least a couple of people contact me saying that I am aware of it. I applied, but my provider isn't participating. So it's interesting that you don't have any, any knowledge of that being an issue at all.
Yeah, I think it depends on the provider, you know. And I don't think you want to tell me now who that is, but we'd be happy. And it might be an issue where the provider's not aware of how the program works. But we'd be happy to follow up with that provider and have some discussions with them and point them in the right direction. Because, I mean, quite simply, it improves their customer base and brings more revenue into their pocket. So we don't understand why they wouldn't take advantage of it.
I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but if I were, if I were thinking long-term in terms of creating a municipal broadband system, with or without, you know, others providing the actual endpoint service, the most expensive part of that system would be to reach the, what are currently unserved areas, which, and the reason they're unserved is because they're expensive to extend service to. This initiative, if the county, you know, pushes to extend service to these places, will cover that gap. But then the infrastructure that's installed will not be the county. So the $7 million would have been spent, more or less, to provide service to those locations, which would have to be duplicated later on if one were to move in the direction of doing it municipally. It seems like, it seems like it would be highly advantageous to retain some ability to either recapture that infrastructure or to have some ownership stake in it in the first place. I don't hear that being part of the conversation.
You can, you can go back and actually, and it's all part of the negotiation, you can actually request from them a revenue from the users, for all the folks that actually use it. It's not uncommon to do that. We typically don't throw that out there in the beginning, because then people focus on that. And the reality is, is that's all the negotiation process. And the majority of the money that gets spent, once the infrastructure's in place, and let's say there's a $79 a month fee, the majority of the money to operate that network comes in the customer service end of it, the bodies, the trucks, the, all the infrastructure support that needs to happen to make all that work. So a lot of times, we've seen that communities will say, well, jeez, you know, $79 a month you're making, I want 39. And those numbers just don't work. And what realistically ends up happening in most cases is they come in with a number somewhere around $10 to $12 per customer per month. It would be money that could potentially come back to the community. But keeping in mind, you know, we said $7 million, that's if you built the infrastructure yourself. I would very much expect that in a negotiation, you would come in less than that. Anadaga County, for example, they had a $15 million budget. They came in at $11 million. And they are negotiating a, an indefensible right of use with Verizon, which does not do this. I think we put a gun to their head almost, but, but generally, you know, they're loosening up, they're changing their minds, and they're starting to think a little bit more creative. But I wouldn't think that you would want to spend the $7 million unless all the other providers said, no, we're not doing it. And then, then you move right down the list of what your solutions would be, which one of them would be to build it yourself, absolutely.
Others have questions? Dan?
Yeah. First of all, I'm a Clarity Connect customer, and I asked about that federal subsidy program. They said, we don't participate. Clarity Connect is one of the major ones in the county. So you said you had some trick to making them, to getting some info about that. I would like to hear that one.
Yeah, I know Chuck. We've worked with Chuck for years. I think we worked with Chuck before Chuck worked with Chuck. Anyway, I'll reach out to him. You know, I'll make that a personal goal. And I'll find out why he's not taking advantage of it. Because the reality is, is yes, it is paperwork. And yes, you've got to get, you've got to qualify. And yes, there are reports that have to be done on a regular basis. But at the end of the day, a customer's a customer. And the more customers you get, the more successful your business model's going to be. So if he's not taking customers because he doesn't want to provide them in that program, then, you know, shame on him. You know, that is absolutely a program that is out there and it should be taken advantage of.
Okay, well, thanks. If there's any info you can find out about that, I would love to hear about it. My question comes from a constituent...
I've got it on my list. I will, I will follow up on that.
My question comes from a constituent who asked if the various internet service providers build out throughout the county, and undoubtedly, they would have to cross some territory that's already covered by other providers, would the people in those sections be able to tap into the new provider?
Bingo. That is the key right there. Because now you have competition in those areas. And absolutely, you would want that provider to go out and you would want them to let everybody know, I'm coming through your area and I'm going to provide services. If you're interested, let me know. But that's exactly what you'd want to see happen. Because you may not get competition everywhere, but it will start in key places of the county. And it would expand from there over time.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you. The, this matter has gone through the Legislative Committee, was it Housing and Economic Development, with a recommendation to the legislature to pursue requests for proposals for doing the line extensions. And I contacted Dan, who, after consulting his colleagues, agreed to postpone action, which was originally scheduled for last week, I guess, until after we had a chance to review it and decide what, if any, input we wanted into the process. So that's the question, I think, that I'd like to raise before the group this afternoon, is what, if any, thing we want to contribute to that process?
Before you, before you go there, can I make a quick comment? I know I've talked a lot, but...
Oh, right.
The RFP, the RFP process happens very quickly. And what you've got, which is very fortunate for you, is you've got time on your side before the bead money becomes available. And if you, over the course of the next two to three months, don't like what you get in the RFP process, you simply move on to the next one. So you're fortunate that you have the time to do this before the big money hits, hits, hits the tables.
So, I mean, one option we have is to endorse the recommendation of the Committee, which was, which was in turn a recommendation of the, what they call the Client Committee or the Oversight Committee, the county-level group that worked with ECC in coming up with the report. Or not. I'm curious to know what your, what your preference is. Mark?
Can I just ask a question? That's, it's, it's been floating there in our discussions because two, two of us, two of our towns are either doing or strongly considering municipal broadband. So how would that fit in with the RFP process?
That's why we purposely said you could do nine zones, and you could do it by town, because we understand that you've been working at this for a while, and you should have the ability to respond to that for your own town. And that's what we would, we would expect you to do that. But I think the benefit to you on the other side of this is, let's say a provider comes back and says, we can do this, we can do the Town of Caroline or Dryden, it'll cost X dollars, and we'll get every home, we'll have 100% coverage. And then if you look at your financials, which, which I'm going to go right out here on the front and say, we don't know what they are, we have not seen that. So we don't know anything about the financials of your, your programs. And we purposely kept it that way. But you may look at that and say, wow, this is a much cheaper, better deal to get this service. And if they're going to guarantee the level of service we're looking for, then you may, it's, it's an option that you may look at and say, well, maybe we'll go this way and stuff that way. Or maybe you'll say, no, this, we're going to continue on our path. This is a better path for our town. So we purposely want you to have that flexibility to do that.
Okay, thank you. It's really hard for me. I cannot separate the two issues identified, which is, I think they're connected, and they have to be connected. So providing access and working long time for, you know, long haul for affordability. So as Joel sort of highlighted earlier, I just, I don't think that those can be segregated in the conversation or the decision-making. So that's, that's where I'm at. And so, yeah.
And what are the, what are the implications, though, in terms of...
Well, I guess, the implication, I mean, I guess the implication is, what decision are we making? What is, what is the question we're being asked? You know, I think it's, I think it's to provide a long-term solution. And certainly, it's going to be more expensive, you know, say, the municipal broadband option. But I think what we do now can establish or build a foundation for, for moving forward. And I think has been, as you pointed out earlier, we are expecting more funding to be available for broadband. It's a nationally-recognized issue, so.
So I guess I need to clarify some stuff. We're asked to maybe recommend one of the options? I don't, sure where we started with that?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, we're, we were given the opportunity to review, much the same information that the legislature was provided. And the question, I would say before the group is, what do we want to do with that information? Do we want to make a recommendation? Do we want to just say, do we want to endorse what they're doing? Do we want to just say, do we want to endorse what they're doing, or object to what they're doing?
Well, actually, my real question is, if we were to support Mark's concerns of the four options, would option three be the one that would encompass both affordability and infrastructure? Maybe that's-
I don't, I don't believe that would be the case.
Okay. I mean, I'm trying to-
I think, yeah, the, keeping in mind with option three, you, you're building the infrastructure out to those areas that may already exist today, which is why option one and two are much less, because that's the actual cost to build fiber from existing infrastructure to locations that currently do not have it. Option three is to build infrastructure out from the center of the community, or, or Ithaca, to reach those areas and then provide the last mile to the homes. So you're building middle-mile backbone as well with option three.
Yeah, I think it's closer to the mic.
I kind of understand what you're saying, but would option three give us more ownership in the affordability to the person receiving the services ultimately?
It could. It could. I don't think that's a guarantee necessarily, though. I think the affordability side of it, that really, that's partly an infrastructure issue, but it has to deal more with adoption issues. You know, can they afford it? What can they afford? You know, will they, will they buy it even if you build it? You know, that's a, that's a tough discussion right now, because adoption can, can mean anything to different people. So when you talk about affordability, you know, what would somebody be willing to pay for broadband? You know, if you could get a gigabit, would you be willing to pay $79 a month for it? Well, if you're only willing to pay $39 a month for anything today, then the answer to that would be no. So it's, it's a, adoption's a personal broadband choice and issue. And when you try to wrap affordability into building your own infrastructure, you're trying to combine both the physical and the personal, and it's, and they're two totally separate issues. If that doesn't confuse you nothing, well.
If I could also add, you know, if you go through the-
We don't agree on Dryden, so.
If you could go through the RFP method, if you end up doing that, you could find that you will get providers offering services, maybe not at the cheapest rate for, for the RFP. So like, for instance, if, if one provider might say, hey, listen, we can hit all these addresses, these unserved addresses, for $5 million. And another provider could come in and say, well, we could do it for six. That other provider that would be raising the cost, or, or having a higher cost, they could be actually expanding their network into other areas to, to enhance and provide more competition. And competition invariably will help to lower costs and provide better services. So, you know, it depends on how you evaluate the RFP responses and, and how you make that selection. And if you get responses that you don't like, there's nothing to do. You know, you can go to the next, to the next step.
When you say competition, are you referring to the actual service provider, the ISP? Or are you talking about the contractor to build out and lay the fiber?
No, the ISP.
And you think, if, if we build it, then this competition will come? Because for a lot of us, if that were the case, that would have already happened.
Yeah, that's not necessarily true. If you build it, they will come. Some providers will, but some will not. Like, we know that, that Verizon, and we know that Spectrum will not use your infrastructure, that we know. We know Empire will. You know, Empire would welcome using your infrastructure. So there's, there's no guarantee of competition if you build it. But what you do get with that is you do get ownership of the infrastructure, and then for those that do use it, you now have the potential of a revenue source, because now you can charge them a monthly fee per customer, because they no longer have that, that capital cost, if you will.
Which could be returned to the customer in terms of a higher overall fee.
Or lower, yes.
I guess our concern is that access, as, as Mark just indicated, it means two things. It's, it's whether you're physically connected to fiber and if you can afford it. And our, our reoccurring concern is that, you know, we'll have the system invested in, but the ISPs will come in and charge $7,500 a month, and, and set data, you know, accordingly. And we know it can be provided for less. And what the Town of Dryden is, is offering is $49 a month for 400 megabytes, megabits per second, symmetrical. And if someone can come in and match that, I think, I think we'd be interested. But our concern is they're, they're not going to, and, and so access will only be in the physical sense, but not in the financial sense.
Which is very possible, yes. But on the other hand, again, not having seen your financials, I don't know if that's a valid business model. You know, there are hundreds of these models that are being developed across the country. And, you know, $49 a month, you know, that's a great number. I'll sign up for it myself.
Well, I hope you do. We didn't pick it out of the blue. We, we've done several modeling exercises with this, involving, you know, teams from Cornell, involving our own consultant. I, I don't think it's an outrageous speculation. We wouldn't be investing million, mil, sorry, millions of dollars in this project if we didn't think the model was sound.
Right.
I guess one of the things that Jason and I would put out to you is that we, we now have state-enabling legislation that just passed that allows the, the Town of Dryden to work with the Town of Caroline across municipal lines. And it's possible that after we do that, we could work with the Town of Danby, and we could work with the Town of Groton, and, you know, build out sequentially like that, assuming, you know.
If you don't mind, could I ask a question on that? Because that's, that's a good point that you're bringing up. One question that I have is that, is, is the Town of Danby project, is that providing service to every resident, every address in the, in the town?
Yeah, I think you meant the Town of Dryden.
Dryden, it's Dryden.
Town of Dryden, sorry.
Yes. Our, our, our goal, and, and it's been throughout this project, is to reach every resident. And that's the method that we're, we've already started service, we have customers. But the reason why we have support from our public is that we want to get out to, to homes like mine, which do not have fiber, and I often get my meetings interrupted when I'm doing this from home. So I'm not just a-
Yeah, but it's also going to cross homes like mine, which I have Spectrum. I could, if I really want to cause pain to myself, use Frontier DSL if I want to. But the thing is, is that, you know, you talk so much about the private model working, but the reason why we're doing our, our version, which is really option three in your solutions, is because the private model always comes back asking for public money to build to all of these addresses, so clearly, their model doesn't work. And we gave up negotiating with Spectrum just because the only method we had was through the cable television franchise agreements, which, as you know, are toothless, which virtually every town here was joined, would joined in at the same time back in 2018 to do that, and we got nowhere. So, I mean, I would love it if, if these companies would just build without having to ask us for money all the time, but they don't do that. So they're, they're not interested in universal service, they're not interested in containing costs. What they want is free money, like they always do, and they want a profit off of it. And, you know, the, our model's going to start at, you know, say, 49 for the 400, 400, but the goal is to bring it down, because once the infrastructure's paid off, we're only doing operation and maintenance, and then maybe some marketing to keep getting new customers. But it'll work more like our water and sewer systems, which is maintain the system, and then when people want to come, you know, on and off the system, they can, because if they want to go with Spectrum, great, because we're not going to be offering television or phone, and that's probably our biggest hurdle with getting subscribers, is that we're not bundling those two services with the internet service, but we're doing that right now for regulatory reasons.
Well, the, the amount of masses that are leaving paid television like Spectrum are incredible. You know, so their business model of, of getting TV programming is, is dwindling rapidly, so I don't think that necessarily hurts you, per se, and I don't know anybody that doesn't own a cell phone. So I, I don't honestly think those two models hurt you. In fact, if you did try to offer TV, I think it would, it would probably destroy your business model. So you're probably in a better position where you are.
Well, the cell phone service bit for a lot of rural customers actually runs off your Wi-Fi now, so.
Right.
It's not, you know, you're extending your cell network when you're on your own fiber network.
Right, exactly.
So would, would the town be interested in responding to a bid for the unserved addresses that were identified in the town itself, as well as surrounding towns?
Yeah, we'd be sure, we sure would, yeah.
So, I think that would be beneficial, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be the provider, so.
If we're allowed, we'll do it.
Yeah, that's why we, that's why we decided the, the nine zones, to give you the flexibility of responding to that.
Mike Murphy?
Can I interrupt something?
Yes, go ahead.
It sounds like with the first one and two, basically, we're subsidizing and giving money to the Spectrum or whoever is the driving carrier. They're not really getting a choice, they're just, they're doing it, something they were supposed to do before with cables, and they didn't go out there.
Right.
And now Spectrum will probably be putting cable out there, which it was too expensive to do before, but now we're paying for it, they're willing to do it. And they're going to charge us the price for it. This is a time, I would think, to go with the Town of Dryden's way, to get a public service out there, because there's money available. If we had to come up with all the money, the town probably wouldn't be doing it. But since there's grant money out there, and lots of it, and it's big incentive, I would think Tompkins County was the one that came up with the insurance program, Tompkins County Health Insurance. And now we have about seven or eight different counties, and I don't know how many different businesses, not businesses, but municipalities in it, because we were proactive and did something, is Tompkins County. And I think that if we went for a public like the town is trying to do, that we would make it competitive and make it good. And there's a lot of money out there, and I don't know why the whole county can't go for it, not just the town. And then, we wouldn't be giving money to a monopoly that's going to get to charge whatever price they want, because there's never going to be a significant competition. Yes, if you were up by Syracuse or someplace where it's a big city, there might be more competition, but the rural areas, I don't think there may be, somebody will come through and give a little competition, but nothing significant. So I like that plan, which would be like number three in the options, which it gives it more that the public controls it, and their interest is to make it most economical for the people to use it. And it's nice that you can go after grants, but everybody's pointed out so far that, yes, you can get subsidized if you go through the humps, and it's very hard, and it's complexed, and everything else. And who says they're going to continue to give it? Right now, they're giving money, grant money, for building, and I think we should go that way. But that's just my opinion. That's all I have to say.
So what's the, what's the sense of the group? Joe?
I, I just want to say that I, I keep looking back and seeing us spending $15 million on an airport upgrade, and comparing that to how much benefit, to the benefit to the whole county versus $20 million to get everybody on internet, the balance doesn't really seem the same to me. I think getting people on internet's a much bigger priority, and well worth the money spent. And I like the idea of building a governmental-owned thing instead of just handing money so that Spectrum can every month decide that they want a little bit extra and a little bit extra, which is, the experience I get is, all of a sudden, the bill goes up, you don't really know why or what happened, it's just, this month, it's another $10, another And I hate just giving these companies millions of dollars so that they can sign up more It's a business model, and it, it works for them, I get that, but it doesn't seem to work for the customers as well, and certainly not our taxpayers.
So, so the, the question, I guess, is whether or not we are okay with the, with the county effort to request proposals and see what comes, outcomes of it, or whether we have serious reservations about taking that route at all, and, and, and want to suggest that maybe a harder look should be taken at, at the alternatives? Because there is a tension between the desire to get service to the people who don't currently have it, and you can do that most expeditiously, and probably cheapest, by extending the, you know, the service from where it is to where it isn't, it isn't yet. But that doesn't necessarily serve the larger picture of providing, you know, good service to everybody in the county. It doesn't win any of our competition, and, and it's, it's money invested in a particular route, which, which could be used the other way. I, I'd almost like to think that we could, you know, if we could have whoever built out the system, build it out, and that the additions be publicly owned and become part of, you know, later on, a, a municipal system. But evidently, from what, what, what Joe has said, there are at least a couple of the players who will not, weren't willing to basically use other, other people's infrastructure in order to, to, you know, reach their customers. So if the, if Spectrum is among them, and it, and evidently it is, a lot of the areas are served by Spectrum, and, you know, if you extended the lines out, and they weren't participating, how would you get the people who were on the lines that you just installed connected to the service? I guess that's a question for Dryden, because if you were-
Yeah.
If you were going to, if you were going to build it out, say, to the unserved areas, how would you get service to those extensions?
Well, we have vendors that provide that service for us, that are providing it right now. And we own the fiber.
Yes, and Dryden. But I mean, if you were, if you were to bid in, in the RFP process for extending the service to the unserved areas-
Yeah.
-you would be installing infrastructure that then you could not yourself service, because it's not connected to your-
No, it would be connected to what we already have access to. So we're already getting, I think, was it?
Feed-in lines.
Yeah, we have a feed-in line that comes from the south.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be-
So we would be running it, you'd be physically connecting to that, and then running to these unserved areas in Caroline or Danby or what have you, just like anybody else would have. I mean, Spectrums, you know, if they, they say that wherever they're in Danby, they'd be running from there, from their locations that already exist there.
Yeah.
The difference is, we have a different distance to go, but it's the same concept. So, or, or like if there was a trunk, like say there was a dark fiber line going somewhere remotely in Caroline, for instance, we could always connect there from that spot. We'd have to put another equipment, you know, large equipment shed in, like we have in the Air Town Hall, until you can join the networks. But that's, I mean, that's roughly how it would work, if you do it that way, or we just build off of what we already have in Dryden.
Yeah. Well, and what, building off of what you have in Dryden would probably work for, say, Caroline, or-
Yeah.
But, but, but probably not for Enfield, say.
No, yeah, not for Enfield. That would be a little, that would be a little tough.
I, I, I mean, it, it seems like we have a lot of questions, and I, I don't know if we're really going to be able to, you know, I think, I think it's clear that, that we do have questions about how best to proceed. about how best to proceed. I'm just wondering, we should probably wrap this up soon and...
Yes, and the question is, what do we do? Because the question, the proposal is going back to the legislature on what, Dan, June 6? Yeah? For them to endorse the solicitation of proposals.
You can, you can do the RFP, you don't have to award anything.
Yeah.
Right? You absolutely don't. So the one thing, as I mentioned, you have time on your side, and I think first and foremost, you've got to figure out as a community, what are we trying to accomplish? If it's bringing high-speed broadband, community-owned broadband to everybody, that's fine, then that's the model we should work off. If it's getting broadband in the hands of those people that don't have it, then that's a different model. And in terms of option three, which is the build-out of the middle-mile infrastructure to connect those homes that don't have it, we can do a business strategy on that to tell you what the finances would look like, you know, and how would that work out financially? But the one thing I would want you to keep in mind, because these things invariably get political, is that what are you going to do for the other 37,000 homes in the county who are still using Spectrum and Verizon and Clarity and et cetera, et cetera? And I'm not sure that 37,000's the right number, but, you know, that's, if you're looking at a community-owned, everybody gets high-speed broadband, that's where we want to go. Then we're looking at an 80 or 90 million dollar project. Otherwise, you're really looking at a project that's going to solve an issue for a select number of homes in the county. Eventually, it will expand out, but, you know, I just want you to keep that in mind. You can do the RFP and you don't have to award, but at least it gives you an idea of where things are at and what the players are willing to do for you. In the meantime, you can develop the business models around doing it yourself for those unserved homes or for the entire county.
And I guess that raises the question of whether, what the willingness, because this is not a project of any one of us, what the willingness is of the county to investigate those other options, which I think many of us hoped would be part of the evaluation of the options that was going to come out of your study.
Could I ask a question? So we put out the bid for the RPI. They're just going to build it out there, that's their cost of building it, but that doesn't say that they're going to give the hookup to Spectrum or whoever's locally already there, that they're just going to do the, that's how much it's going to cost to hook up the houses for there's, where it's not hooked up to. So in wherever it is, if there's charter in one place, they would be the one that you'd be connecting to, and mostly around here at Spectrum, you'd be going to connect to. So, and somebody brought up the fact that, could we own that part and be selling that service, the clientele's from that area, as a public agency so that we could expand it at a future date and so we could grow up? And right now, there's grant money out there, it sounds like your goal was to find out how to hook up the unused houses or non-hucked-up houses, as opposed to you weren't given the command to say, we could hook everybody up, how much it's going to cost, what would be if we had a public system, and how much would it cost, and how much of the billions of dollars that the federal government's giving to cable, not cable, but Internet? So I'm curious, can we pay the $7 million to have these places hooked up and keep it as ours and then give the service, you know, sell the service to the Spectrum if that's the only one around?
All right. First of all, let me clarify something, Mr. Murphy. The $7 million gets you to the driveway.
Oh, just to the driveway?
Gets you the ability, it gets you the ability to say, it's available at my house or my address.
Okay.
Some of these homes could be 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet off the driveway, that number's not included in the, in the $7 million. To do that, you're probably looking at another $2 to $3 million to build into each of these homes. And that's a, that is almost a religious discussion across the country right now, is how much does the taxpayer pay to bring broadband into somebody's house that may never use it? Right? So that's, you know, we talk about the adoption issue, it gets a little bit closer there because you may spend that money to bring it to their house, but they may never buy it. Most people will, but they may not, and there's no guarantee of that.
Right. Well, you only hook up homes that want it, so, and Dryden, if a home wants it and it's a 500-foot driveway, our policy, I believe, is to cover the first 250 feet and anything additional the homeowner shares in the price tag of.
Right.
Joel, if I could jump in just for a second to piggyback off of what Mark said, we have Mike Stately from the Department of Emergency Response who's been waiting patiently for over an hour to talk about EMS, and while broadband may be life and death for some, EMS is actually life and death for everyone whoever calls 911. Also, speaking only for myself, I don't know if we will maintain quorum for our bylaws vote if we get much past five.
Yes, right.
I just want to say, the June 6 date is not drop-dead, they're just going to send out an RFP that they may or may not accept, so why don't we table this for now and continue the discussion, because we've got time to discuss it, no matter what the county does on June 6th, is my understanding, so. I'm with you, let's move on and talk about it at our next meeting.
So what we'd be doing is basically foregoing comment, essentially further, and allowing the process to continue.
I think Dan can go back and say, there's some discussion here.
Yeah.
Taking some very good notes.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay. Thank you, Joe, and crew.
All set?
All right, well, then...
I would suggest we do a quick bylaws vote now while we have quorum and then move on, because I think that can be just a quick vote.
Why not? Is everybody agreeable?
Bye, guys.
Yes, let's move on to the bylaws. Yes. So we have a proposal, everybody's had a chance to look at it, I trust.
I'll move it.
Joe moves that we approve the revised bylaws. Mark seconds. Any discussion about them before we vote? Dan?
So I just looked at them, I see that I was an alternate, alternate member, now an alternate representative.
Yes.
Are there other significant changes? I didn't get a red line.
The main one was to allow us to conduct most of our business remotely. Previously, bylaw changes required an in-person meeting, which is why we're all here today. Those are the main differences, there are a bunch of little ones besides.
It allows committees, this group to form committees, which weren't in our original. It actually makes the county board member a voting member, which isn't, you aren't according to our old bylaws.
Oh, really?
Yes. So that's a significant change you might be in favor of, even though you can't vote.
I'm in favor.
And then there was a lot of cleanup and language and just modernizing it and stuff.
Voting section was eliminated because it was redundant, and there was a 30-day advance notice for changes to the bylaws added.
Well, it used to just say advance notice, which was too vague. I mean, there's a lot of just cleanup of language like that that happened. And then there was a clarification of the municipalities are the members and we are their representatives, because that was vague in the original bylaws.
Thank you. Any further discussion or clarification? If not, yeah, Cynthia, please.
Just a quick question, there's mention, I can't find it now, having to do with if we were to have a meeting electronically, it's allowable as long as everyone can see and hear each other in real time. So say you have one or two members where they freeze up, there's a glitch, what does that do for the validity of the meeting?
Well, it points to the need for good broadband service.
I think it just means that that member during the glitch is not a participating member, just like if I went to the bathroom right now, I wouldn't be a participating member of this meeting, even if you guys had a vote.
They have to be present for when it comes time to vote on a particular point. I think that's the best we can do. Short of being here.
Thank you.
Anything else? So do we, do we need to roll call for this? No, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Let's see, how many do we need?
We need 11.
We got it?
We needed 11, we haven't.
All right, great. Anyone opposed? Anyone, well, we know one abstention, but, because you didn't vote because you couldn't, right?
No, told me I couldn't vote.
Yeah, right. It's actually ambiguous, I think.
But in any case, it won't be after this vote.
Yes, it will be clear that you, that the county rep is a representative as well.
Look forward to it. Look forward to my first vote.
Yeah. Okay, so that's done. So that brings us back to emergency services.
Great, so Mike Stately and Joe Milliman are here to talk to us about the, where we're at with addressing county-wide emergency first response, and so I'm just going to turn it over to them without further ado, so.
And before that, because I was a little bit remiss, I have, I have a note from Katrina that Elliot Benman, from the Department of Planning, wanted to say a few words about the CDBG grant solicitation. And if you would do that, Elliot, at this juncture, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. This is actually about the Tompkins County Housing Affordability and Supportive Infrastructure Grant Program. I just wanted to provide a quick update. So we continue to accept applications for the 2023 round. The program was funded by Tompkins County this year at $15,000. The program awards grants of up to $10,000 to municipal governments to increase the supply of affordable housing, foster housing diversity, and address unmet housing need. Municipalities may apply to the program to prepare state grant applications, improve local zoning and development review processes, advance housing projects, conduct research or plan or build supporting infrastructure. The grant requires a 10% match. So far this round, we've made one award of $5,000 to the Village of Dryden, and that was to complete a CDBG housing rehab application. So currently, we have a balance of $10,000 remaining to award. The applications, applications are accepted on a rolling basis through September 25th. The instructions for applying are available on the Tompkins County website, and the legislative clerks will be sending out email later today or tomorrow that will have the link to the program guidelines and to the application instructions. And I don't know if you have any time in your agenda today to ask any questions, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think we're mostly aware. Some of us have taken advantage of this, is excellent. It'd be great if we had even more money to bring to the process, but that's...
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Okay, switching back.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me okay. For those that don't know me, my name is Michael Stately, I'm the director at the Tompkins County Department of Emergency Response. I've been in my position for just under two years. To my right is my colleague Joe Milliman, who is our new EMS program manager, and he's been in his position for about two months. About a year, a little over a year ago, I joined the, I guess really as a, as a visiting member of the Tompkins County TCOG EMS Subcommittee, where I was really interested in hearing about the work that's been done by the Subcommittee for the last several years to address some gaps in our community's emergency medical services. Last fall, the TCOG EMS Subcommittee made a presentation to the Public Safety Committee, and at the conclusion of that presentation, I was asked to provide some suggestions on what we thought could help our community-based services address some of those gaps. And part of the outcome of my recommendation was to create an EMS program manager's position, and that's the position that Joe is now in. For the last several months, Joe has been working with the TCOG EMS Subcommittee and a newly-formed EMS steering committee that comprises of about 20 community leaders in emergency services and healthcare industry in Tompkins County to look at some of the root cause issues that we are seeing in the community-based response and some of the gaps that exist there. So last Tuesday, Joe and I presented to the Public Safety Committee, you know, some solutions that we thought might help to address some of these concerns. So we're here today to just give a very high-level overview of that recommendation or some of our recommendations, and then to leave time for questions, but realizing the time, and I will certainly say I would love to come back maybe to your next meeting, where there could be, you know, more time spent, you know, answering questions and really just to get to know this group. Joe and I will be at the meeting on the 30th with Bridget Nugent to talk a little bit more about this endeavor, because we believe that there's some shared service opportunities here. But in essence, what we proposed to the Public Safety Committee was to look to staff three strategically-placed rescue units, or what we're referring to as a rapid medical response unit, and to maybe provide a little bit of a visual, if you can think of a SUV-style vehicle staffed with an EMT that could help really supplement the community-based services, fire departments in particular, and their rescue program. So if you're not familiar with the term rescue, it's rapid medical response typically done by your local fire, fire departments, and that is the area that we're noticing that there is the biggest gap. And what a rescue unit does is it's dispatched in advance of an ambulance, a transport unit, to the scene of emergency medical call. They begin with treating life-threatening injuries and emergencies and await the arrival of a transport unit. Sometimes the transport unit can take upwards to 25 minutes, depending on where you are in the county, and in the event that the local community-based rescue service isn't able to respond, that would mean that a person who calls 911 for a medical emergency could be waiting for somebody, anyone, up to 25 minutes, if not more, to arrive at their door. So part of our proposal, which was really more of a discussion, was to sort of provide this framework to the Public Safety Committee that we think would work, again, by having strategically-placed units throughout the county, and would really address the areas of the county that seem to have the biggest trouble. What I'm really proud about is that we've been working very closely with the Fire Chiefs Association, and we have their full support, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, we have a rather large steering committee. We felt that steering committee, you know, 20, 20 committee members is a lot, but we felt because of the significance of what we're looking to do, that we really didn't want to exclude anyone, and I'm really pleased that we've had such a great working group and in a very short time have been able to put together a proposal. So after we made that recommendation to the Public Safety Committee, they gave Joe and I some homework to come back to them for the next meeting. We gave them some very, again, very high-level numbers and approach, but, you know, after last October, we were given, you know, some directives as far as to flush it out a little bit, so I didn't want to wait too much longer before we went back, before the Public Safety Committee, to make some recommendations. And Mark and Dan were present for that, and I was really pleased, and the mayor has been instrumental in, I think, helping to design this as well, so. And I guess just because I'm concerned about time, I mean, I can go into further depth if you'd like, I'd like to answer questions, I'd like to come back, I just, but I thought it was really important, and I really appreciated the opportunity that the mayor, Dan, and Mark provided us and the invitation to come here and meet with you today.
Great, thank you, Mike, that's, that's great, and I want to reiterate, I just, I think Mike and Joe have done a great job of reaching out to all the stakeholders and keeping everyone involved and informed, so. Dan?
Yeah, Mike and Joe gave a really, a strong presentation...
Yeah, Mike and Joe gave a really a strong presentation on Tuesday to the county legislative Subcommittee. I want to thank you guys for really communicating the needs effectively. There was some immediate desire to help expressed by members of the county legislature, so getting their initial response was very positive as we gather more information about the cost levels of the service. I think what got their attention was, you know, your ability to communicate in your graphs, your charts, the performance of some of our rescue units that we just assume are always available and ready to go when we know that there's a crisis in staffing for our rescue services, and the transport ambulances are stretched very, very thin. So we've got our sort of thumb on the pulse of this now with these guys involved, and it's getting attention. I will add Harris Weis was here earlier, correct, before I got here, but I caught him on the way out. He's interested in this program, but he couldn't stick around because he had to be in 1,000 places. But I think this is the sort of thing that we're the county to invest in it now, there could be additional funding available through the state. You mentioned the shared services grants. I think that's an avenue that we could get support through or perhaps other ones, but it's a very, very exciting project so far.
Joe?
As living in one of those municipalities, it's got a long wait time for people to show up. I do have a couple of questions. How would this be funded? You know, is this going to be I'm paying for an ambulance and a first responder to show up, or is it more like the fire department shows up and I don't get an extra bill for that?
It would be very similar to what the fire department does now. The system that we're looking at would be staffed with an EMT, and Joe can speak to that a little bit more specifically on how billing works, but at the moment, the model that we're looking to create would not bill. It doesn't mean that eventually it can evolve into that, depending on the level of care that we were providing in that pre-hospital setting, but at the EMT level, that's not currently what we're considering. And there's other reasons as well, but I think one of the things I'd really like to point out is that this is really about augmenting and supplementing what's already there, not supplanting any of the existing services, which is why I'm really pleased that we've gotten a level of support that we have from the community-based services. So just wanted to point that out.
So normally now, the fire department tries to show up to emergency cases. Would this go in place of the fire department, or would you have both?
That's a great question. What we envision is really a simultaneous dispatch. One of the favors that we would eventually ask of our community-based services, if they know their rescue will not be in service, to let the 911 center know so that we could then move the assets to the areas that have the greatest need based on the time of day, based on our data. But if, for example, we didn't know and they weren't dispatched and they weren't able to answer the call, then we could quickly answer that call, if not going simultaneously with them. If we weren't sure if they did call it in service, then we could then cancel ourselves and remain in service for the next call.
And so the SUV shows up, and they determine that the issue is minor enough that it doesn't need transport. Can they then cancel the ambulance?
Absolutely. In fact, that's a really great point, and that's something that we saw in our data collection, is that sometimes when a rescue isn't able to respond and an ambulance does have to respond to receive what is referred to as an RMA, refusal of medical assistance. So now that ambulance is responding, they're going to the scene just to get that RMA, and now they have to go back in service and, you know, centralize themselves again for the next call. So we're hoping that this might help us identify some of those more minor issues early on, and if there's not a need for a transport unit, we'd be able to cancel them.
Thank you.
I actually think it'd be great if, for the, a lot of Joe's questions are answered in a particular slide based on the data collection they did, which shows that Lansing in particular, there are, I think, three of the six codes that go out Lansing will not respond to. So that means if it's a particular code for a particular type of call, you have to wait for a longer response time anyway. It's not that there's a staffing issue, it's all related to staffing, but certain rescue services are specifically declining certain types of calls, and dispatch knows that, so they don't even get toned. So those are some of the larger holes that this service will hopefully fill. And then when that happens, if it's known that a particular code, which could be for a minor, potentially minor injury, is not, the local rescue service is not available for that, then that means Bangs or Dryden has to pick up that call, which then means that those crews are not available for the next call. And then, you see how the network gets strained.
I totally understand the use of this. I'm just trying to understand how this proposal works.
Sure, sure. So I think actually in a future presentation, it would be good to show in particular that slide, because that's very enlightening to know when you think, you know there's a fire department there, you know they answer the fire calls, but they're not available for certain types of medical calls at all, is enlightening.
Was that presentation recorded to the, by the?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, it was part of the Public Safety Committee meeting, so it is a recorded.
Could that be shared with us? It sounded like a lot of good information. It would be good for us to review.
Absolutely. And we could even, I could make sure that the presentation is available and then it would be mailed out to the entire group if you like.
Yeah, the slides are great.
Yep, absolutely. I'll make sure of that.
Sounds like major progress.
Joe?
What is the extent of this? Because when this was proposed back in the fall for funding, we were talking about a fly car. I notice now we're talking about response units in the plural. So how many units are being proposed at this point? And another question, are they going to be 24/7, or are they going to be 9 to 5?
Great question. So we're proposing three units right now, and that's based on some data analysis that we did in the areas of the county that we feel have the greatest need. That's the proposal. We're proposing a 12-hour shift Monday through Friday. I'm going to use the timeframe as 7 to 7, but there might be like maybe 8 to 8 or 9 to 9. And the reason I say that is, again, we really want the data to drive when we and where we place the units specifically, although we have some certain geographical areas we know we like to place those units. We also want to be able to have the flexibility to move units based on the need. So we also believe that, you know, the authority having jurisdiction or a local community-based service should be able to answer their calls after, you know, that 7 o'clock time period and on the weekend. So we're really looking to cover those peak hours and where the community-based services seem to have the most difficulty and where the volunteers have the biggest challenge of responding, which is during the day.
So clarifications, like 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but not 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Joe?
Yes.
I have to leave, and I really would like to see your presentation. This is very interesting to me.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
And again, I certainly don't mind coming back either to your next meeting or whatever meeting you feel is most appropriate, because I think we're all excited about this. We know there's a lot of questions, and I'd like to make myself available to answer those questions. And maybe after you get the presentation, I'll even have more questions.
Well, I think, you know, having that presentation for us to review ahead of time, and then we'll kind of maybe generate a list of questions, and we can have a conversation about it next time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Moving on. The committee reports.
Thanks, Mike and Joe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Broadband, we pretty much covered the field, didn't we? Public Security Municipal Information Technology Services. Is there a committee on that?
Kaitlin did pass along what her wishes were for the update.
Okay.
I'm Michelle Wright. I'm Kaitlin's second deputy supervisor and budget officer, so nice to see everybody.
And alternate member of this group.
Correct, correct, yep. So the IT committee has not met since the last TCOG meeting, is what I understand from Kaitlin, but she didn't want to pass along a communication that we had for, well, essentially, I went to a conference, the Southern Tier Central Regional Planning Board has a great conference in April that is low-cost if anybody needs training for their planning boards and BZAs. It's a great opportunity. It's like 50 miles to Cortland, but, or no, sorry, it's a drive to Corning, and not in our regional planning area, but it's a great resource, so just a shout out to that very affordable conference. But I ran into, I went to a session with a GIS specialist who works for the Regional Planning Board or Commission, I'm not sure how, what the phrase is, but for, it's the Southern Tier West Planning Regional Commission. And what that, what that planning board is doing is funding a GIS analyst to work with any local government that's in that region to map all of their public assets. So, you know, what the end result looks like are very much dots on a map that a highway crew could use their phone, update some asset, and it's all of a sudden in the permanent record for that municipality. So they're doing that at a regional level, and it's at a very low cost to municipalities. So this has significant long-term financial planning implications for any municipality that's been involved in it. The town of Ulysses has a database of all of our assets, but it's not mapped to GIS and because we just can't afford to do it at this point. So we reached out to this GIS analyst, and essentially, they're overwhelmed. The response to the participation, the request for municipalities to get involved, has been overwhelming. There's, it's almost 100% participation in that region. So all of these municipalities in Western New York have their public assets mapped to GIS. And so they don't have any capacity to add on other municipalities that are outside of that region, but they know we're interested. So as far as, the town of Ulysses is interested in participating, so that's something that Kaitlin will be pursuing once they have, you know, they're just launching this program. It's maybe a year old, and it's a very special program that our GIS is used universally in that realm, and they are, this is the only program, this, across the country, they're the only ones doing it in Western New York. So there's still all these glitches to work out as far as that central administration of this program goes. There's lots of software issues that they're debugging at this point, so hopefully, this is something that they can expand on in the next five years. It'll be available to any municipality in, so that's the update that she wanted to give. It's exciting news that we can't take advantage of yet, but if there is interest with mapping your public assets to GIS, talk to Kaitlin and...
What kind of public assets are you talking about?
Sorry?
What kind of public assets?
Everything to, a town-owned water meter to a culvert, everything in between, yep. Any infrastructure or anything owned by a municipality, roads, street signs, all of it, any of your infrastructure.
Project. Okay, thanks. Have we covered emergency planning in preparedness, or is there more?
Mark, do you have anything else on emergency?
For the emergency services? No, I don't really have anything. I think we covered it. I just, I did just talk to Mike and Joe, and like, they're willing to come back. I told him our next meeting's two months out. He's going to put a hold on his calendar for that, and if we wanted to speak to him sooner, I'm sure he'd be very willing to. So as Dan mentioned, they presented the presentation to the Public Safety Committee this past Tuesday, and that was extremely well-received, a lot of excitement about that, so.
I'll just add, if you run into your county rep anywhere, tell them how much you like their work. Like the sound of this project.
Rob, Energy?
So the Energy Committee met a couple of weeks ago, so I think you know the focus is on electrification and concerns about infrastructure. So I hope everyone remembers getting an email sent out by the TCOG Energy Committee that Terry Carroll wrote. We're asking every municipality to respond to the set of questions on the back of that memo. I think we had set a target date of May 31st. I know you might not get that goal, but if you could do it fairly soon. It goes back to Terry. He's going to consolidate all the information, and it's really just getting a handle on what are you expecting your development needs to meet or anything related to your increase in electric demand so that we can compile that information. We're keeping track of other information as well. There's some modeling going on by the city around electrification. Terry Carroll and Haley will be putting together a show and tell of electric vehicles sometime in the next few months geared to municipalities, elected officials and staff, so stay tuned to that. So there's a number of things we're looking for, but the immediate thing is we want one response, just one response, per each municipality. And if you have no idea what memo I'm talking about, send me an email, and I'll forward Terry Carroll's memo to you, but it really explains why we're doing this. And the five questions, you might, you know, depending on your staff or your planning boards or ZBAs, you might try to reach out whoever's going to respond and get as much information as possible. So I'll leave it there.
Transportation, Bob?
No report this month. Move on to the next item.
Water quality, there's no committee on that, right? But who's the?
So we had just left, Cynthia, because she's involved in all these other committees once in a while, would update us if there was anything to update.
I don't have anything to update.
Oh, wow. Look at that. Items for the next meeting that we haven't already identified? Not hearing any. Things will manifest, they always do. And at that, we're done. I guess it's within my authority as chair to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe?